Vacation, like to be on vacation forever.
Surgery of January.
Good evening, uh, I believe that's us. Uh, and welcome to the July eighth meeting of the Stowe Select Board. Um, I will remind people um that we are virtual and also recording. Um, before I take public comment, I just wanted to take um a minute um and kind of remind everyone online and in the room kind of what the ground rules are for our select board meetings and a reminder of what a select board meeting is and it is not. Um, the select board meeting is a business meeting between the five members of the board and the town administrator and the members of the public that we have on our agenda. Um, having said that, I will allow public comment in a minute. Um, it is a public meeting in that the select board has to meet in public due to open meeting law. Uh, unless it's been duly noticed, it is not um a public hearing and it is at the chairs or whoever is chairing in the moment um the meeting, if it's not me. Um, discretion as to whether or not to recognize members of the public. Um, it is the chair's responsibility to not only run the meeting efficiently, to respect the time of their colleagues and other members of the public. Um, and with that, I will take public comment from anyone um online or in the room um that has anything to say that is not on our agenda that we will already be discussing. Anyone online? Anyone in the room? No, all right, well then we will move on to board member updates. Does any board member have any updates? Yep.
I, I was able to send uh Cindy's retirement.
Oh, great.
Yeah, it went really well, it was um really nice to send her off and hear about the news is that uh, the paper will be continuing under new leadership. Um, seems like it's getting good hands and yeah, good to celebrate all of her work.
Great, thank you. Yes.
Just wanted to acknowledge the tragedy that happened in Texas with so many people's lives, over a hundred people's lives lost. And the uh now more than a hundred and sixty still unaccounted for. It's impossible to imagine the pain that the surviving parents, loved ones in the entire community is going down there, but my heart goes out to them.
Thank you.
Yeah.
On that, town administrator's report.
Um, thank you. I actually don't really have much of a report today. Things have been a little crazy here um between that and me being away last week. Uh, just the board is aware, but just to let folks know, Erin has chosen to move on, so she will no longer be working here at the town. So sad to see her go and wish her nothing but the best.
Thank you. All right, then Mr. Selby, uh, you will be up for the Bike for the Woods if you'd like to tell us a little bit about it. We're gonna be talking about your, your special event.
Thank you. Um, I'm here on a, a event permit for Bike for the Woods, which is an annual charity bike ride run. If the, it benefits the Stowe Conservation Trust. Um, this year, as always, it will uh begin at Center School on Sunday, August tenth. Um, we have the usual routes of five miles, fourteen miles, thirty-seven miles and sixty, sixty-three miles. I did it the other day, sixty-three point four, I think. Um, thank you to the police department for reviewing it and uh we're not looking to close any roads as usual. We're not looking for any police details, but the event permit, because we do anticipate over a certain number of people, we're applying for that. Great food, nothing that we're preparing, but from restaurants. Um, Bolton Bean Shaw's has been tremendously generous. Um, I may be hitting up the new owners of Dunkin' Donuts where I may give them a chance to start. Oh. But, well, maybe we'll wait till next year for that. And, and uh the ride itself, the shorter routes, the five and fourteen are pretty flat, family friendly. Um, the thirty-seven, sixty-four, a little more challenging. Um, so if you have any questions about the routes, the safety plan or the event permit, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No, this is gone for years. Thanks again for your dedication.
Sure.
Year after year, Jim, I think it's a very worthy cause.
Anything?
Nope.
Anything? Um, this is fantastic. It looks like we've got everything that we need.
Uh, the certificate of liability insurance, but the new one will come in August, the beginning of August, so.
Yeah, as always, our insurance year ends July thirty-first. We'll provide it after the end of the month.
Fantastic. Fantastic. Okay. Alrighty, um, well with that, I will take a motion, Mr. Board.
Madam Chair, I move to grant a permit for Bike for the Woods for Sunday, August tenth, twenty twenty-five, from nine AM to three PM. Event manager, James Selby, with setups starting at seven AM, pending receipt of certificate of insurance when it is available.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Have fun.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, and.
Just in time, Steph. Oh, that's great. You are our next order of business.
Ready? Hey Scott, sit up.
Yeah, it's good. I'm, we're gonna have questions for you, so join us. Um, all right, so the next um is what has become a beloved annual tradition in the town of Stowe. The Asabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival, and so um Scott?
Yes.
Before we get going, put an order on this.
Yeah. Yes, absolutely.
Since there are three motions, when we get to that point, do you want all three motions read at the same time and then voted? Because it's all for the same event, Madam Chair?
Um, I think because there are three different, there's two different license, let's just vote them separately, I think, just to.
And another, put a order.
Oh, great.
Just to, I'm not gonna recuse myself, because I don't have any financial interest, but I do wanna put on the record that I am part of, I have, I do help plan this event and participate in it.
Fantastic. Thank you. All right, um.
Who are you going out, because my, my, my counselors are on the.
Are you also involved? Come, you can sit in the front if you'd like to. Um, you can sit back there, I can project, I can project my voice.
Be honest.
Um.
It's okay, Scott, you'll be fine.
I can do the daggers in the back of my head.
You're fine. Um, do you wanna give us a brief overview of kind of, for anybody who does not know what this is?
Well, it's, this is fourth.
Yeah, fourth.
The fourth, and the genesis of it is that Neil Saunders, Dave Sansone and myself um had an interest and we were retired in craft beers. And on a weekend, we'd go out and, and at what, at a certain point in time, a discussion came up about doing a festival. And one of the things I think that happened right away is that the three of us found out that we could disagree and still be on the same page. So we'd all have different ideas, it would distill down to um the best idea and uh I, I mean, I have to say, especially uh with, with Dave, he takes care of every detail you can imagine. Neil takes care of a, a lot of the legal, I don't really know what I do, but at, at the, at the end of the day. So, so, so the, every year, it's been pretty much consistently that we've drawn in, in the neighborhood of two thousand, twenty-two hundred people. Uh, the first year, there were, there were a lot of ca- uh baby strollers and dogs, which we couldn't allow anymore. Um, and uh it, it's been the, the same number of people all, you know, pretty much all the time and, and we've raised a significant amount of money each year uh towards uh that's, you know, towards uh the First Parish Church of Stowe and Act. And as I like to say, uh because, well, Neil's moved, but we're three acting boys. And we're basically combining with the Stowe people to, to really bring this about. And it's just been a, a, a pleasure and, and a, a very important part of it is the cooperation that we've had from the offices here, from the, from the police, the firemen. And uh so it's just been a lot of fun and profitable.
Yes.
And if anybody has questions about it, um, fire away.
Excellent.
Um, can I just make a comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
So on your cover sheet, there's still pending, um, the food trucks, those have been approved now, so there are no pending items remaining.
Okay. Great, fantastic. Um, all right, board members, what do you have for me or for them?
May I hear, and is this a, a new thing, no dogs, no strollers?
No, strollers are fine.
Okay.
We just don't allow pets.
And that's the board of health, the board of health regulations, yep.
Okay.
And that's a board of health, that's a, that's a very healthy.
That's, that's new or not new?
I'm sorry?
That's a new thing or not new? Not new.
No, the first year, people were, bought, bought, bought their dogs. We had no problems. But after that, it's clearly on our poster that no pets allowed.
It's really for insurance.
I was gonna say, it's, that was the first year, yes.
That's good.
You wouldn't be able to get insurance coverage, you know, without having to pay an arm and a leg, which is not worth it.
Yep.
So last year was the first year we didn't allow, and we're gonna do the same thing again this year.
Well, and there might have been some aspect of it that had to do with food. You know, similar to like restaurants, you can't bring your dog in unless, well, unless you were sitting outside, so maybe, whatever.
Thank you for clarifying.
But you said service dogs are allowed.
Service dogs are allowed, yep, yep.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and it looks like you'll be having music again this year?
Yep.
Great. Um, all right, and I know we had had some, did you, here, do you have questions?
No.
Are you gonna have questions about liquor licenses? The hours of liquor license has already been extended. We've already talked about it, everything's covered. Hector kindly wants to make sure that your volunteers are able to uh partake in the festival. So we have extended in years past the um, the permit, so that it's after the festival's technically over, but there is kind of that wiggle room with the, um, with the licenses.
Right, we appreciate that.
Yep.
Yeah. All right, I don't have any other questions. Anybody have anything else? Do you guys have any concerns, questions, everything looks fine?
I laid out, I laid out everything in, in a packet that you guys received and, and we've gone over everything and we've had conversations throughout.
You, you did. Yep. Yep. Right.
Starting months ago, and the fire chief and the building commissioner have been well involved, so.
Great, I love it.
And no concerns.
In the packet that we got, they far exceeded the requirements that the police were asking for as well, so.
Right. Right, right.
We have plenty of folks that are certified.
Yes, I did note that for sure.
We actually have somebody this year, a member of the church, who's certified in first aid and.
Fantastic.
And CPR.
And CPR.
That's great, that's great. Um, all right, well, if we don't have any other questions, I will take a motion from you. Um, so we're gonna take three motions. Um, we'll do, I'll start.
Special per, okay, Madam Chair, I move to approve a special permit for the Asabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to be held at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve noon until four PM.
Hang on one second, do we need to make sure the event manager's name is in the motion? Okay, keep going. Oh, until four PM, pending receipt of all requirements?
We have all the requirements.
Oh, we have everything, great.
We don't need anything.
Really cool. All right, you're up.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, that is unanimous. Yep, uh, next.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Asabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to serve beer from five breweries in a delineated area at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve noon until five PM.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Last.
Madam Chair, I move to approve an entertainment license for the Asabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to be held at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve noon until four PM.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye, and that is unanimous as well. Congratulations. And thank you again, truly, um, it's, it's become a lovely event, it's something I can walk to. I really appreciate all of, all of your hard work on it, so thank you.
Thank you, all of you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Once again.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next. All right.
I was gonna ask about the library, but I decided not to, that can't.
Yeah.
Um, all right, we're done, and I'm online.
Are you gonna announce the agenda item or?
I am going to announce it. So we're very excited that we will be discussing the Dunkin' Donuts grand opening and marketing strategies. Um.
So you have Grace and Megan both on Zoom here to discuss that.
Awesome. Hello.
Hi, I'm Megan, Dave, and the franchisee. Uh, normally my husband Mark would be with me tonight, but unfortunately, he's on a whale in town Zoom right now for a project we have going on in Portland. So, both on separate ends of the house, so grateful for the technology. Uh, we're really excited, as you guys have been able to see, we're getting closer and closer to um actually opening after what has been a long few years. Um, I don't know how much introduction, people might, might not know us already. My husband Mark and I, uh, we opened stores from this area all the way into Austin, but we started our main uh stores around Acton, Concord, Baynard. Um, and as soon as we heard that the two stores in Stowe were consecutively sort of closed, we said, we, we need to, we need to fix that. So, and at the same time, you all know all the TikToks and Matt's here and um how exciting that was for the town of Stowe um to be a Dunkin' Desert. So, um, we were real excited, we've been working on this, we really are excited to be able to bring, uh, you know, to keep the historic feel of the, um, you know, the porch and the, the building that was the beef and ale for so many years. Um, we're real excited about uh bringing that life as a Dunkin'. Um, and we've partnered with um Inspire Brands, Dunkin' Porridge, and with Grace here, who's an awesome um marketing guru and to their faith in helping us come up with a really uh fun and um, and different, interesting plan. And it's a little bit different than our normal, um, our normal Dunkin' grand opening. So, just with that, Grace, I want you kind of talk about the thoughts around the specifics for the grand opening.
Um, thanks, Megan. Hi, everyone, nice to meet you all. I'm Grace. I am on the uh local field marketing team at Dunkin', working alongside Megan and our local franchisees. I'm actually from Acton, so this is really fun for me as well. And hopefully you all have seen that Megan and Mark's store is coming along so incredibly, it's gonna be so beautiful. Um, and the grand opening date is coming up really shortly. We're targeting, they're targeting a grand opening date of July twenty-fourth. And knowing just all the, I mean, putting Stowe on the international map a few years ago, dating back to the original Dunkin' Desert story and all the fun that we have with that, it's still one of Matt's favorite stories. Really wanna, with this new store opening, really wanna tap into that buzz, knowing what Dunkin' means to Stowe and how important it is to be a part of the local community. We'd love to partner with you all on something really fun and different to celebrate Stowe no longer becoming a Dunkin' Desert. So we have been in Denise, thank you so much for all of your help, particularly on this. But we would like to propose temporarily renaming the town of Stowe to Dunkin' for the day of the grand opening celebration, so that's July twenty-fourth. This would be purely ceremonial.
Yep.
So addresses would not be changed, signs would not be changed, anything like that. But it's really just giving us a great story to be able to go out and share with the world. Like, you will become the first ever Dunkin' Massachusetts, which I think for every Massachusetts resident, that is your, that's the dream. Um, but the request from you all is to formally approve this renaming for the day and we'd love to celebrate this with getting the news out through a press release, sharing it with Matt Shear. He's really excited to continue to share this story. We have our um Dunkin mascot is called Cuppy. He wears like the cup costumes, so we'd love to celebrate it with having Cuppy receive a ceremonial key to the city at the grand opening event, which that could just be something that we make, you know, a life-size key that says Stowe on it, doesn't have to unlock anything, but just a nice ceremonial way to honor it. And then we would love to have you all out at the grand opening event with Megan and Mark for the ribbon cutting. So targeting around eleven AM on July twenty-fourth. And uh Megan and Mark are doing a hundred days of free coffee giveaway for the first a hundred Stowe residents to come to town. So just really continuing to be a part of the local community, connect with you all, connect with local residents, get them excited. And that is how we are planning to do it, so.
And one other thing to add, we're hoping to open the doors a little bit before the twenty-fourth. Um, as, as soon as we can open the doors, we'd like to open the doors. Uh, but we're gonna do the actual um ribbon cutting and uh a big grand opening celebration um from ten to one and like Grace said, targeting for eleven o'clock ribbon cutting.
Good. Sorry, just writing that down. Okay. Um, this is fantastic. Uh, do you guys have any questions or thoughts about what they are thinking about?
Uh, just more, more of a comment, um, when the, when the story did come out, I have uh friends who are from the Massachusetts area who have since relocated to California and all the way from there, they uh, they let us know that they were praying for us. So I, I think those prayers have been answered, so thank you.
So, so.
Megan, I'm making miracles happen.
So.
Funny side note, so our PR firm on that story, um, they track all of the hits and all the views on anything that involves the town of Stowe. And as you know, that story went in, international, and they actually use that now when they talk about crisis management and how quickly things spread. And they, they use the Dunkin' Desert as an example of how word spreads, whether it's good or bad, because it's just, you know, things just pick up and move, so. Um, so our PR firm is working with uh Grace and Eva and their team to make sure that we make, we get the word out as well on how excited we are on behalf of the town, that Dunkin' is ready to reopen. Uh, they will be here that day because it has been such a big story for the town. Um, and so just so you're aware, I mean, I have been working obviously behind the scenes. Um, we can certainly do just a ceremonial renaming, uh, if that's something the board wishes to do. And as far as the key, um, I appreciate Grace that you've offered, I mean, we could do something if the board wants to actually get like a plaque or something and present it that they can then hang in, in the um store, that would be fine too. So however the board wishes to proceed, we can, we can accommodate.
Okay.
Their request, if that's what you'd like to move forward with.
I like, I like that idea.
Legally, there's no issues with the renaming or anything.
No, it's just a ceremonial, as long as we say that it's a ceremonial.
My only concern is that we don't do that for every business, but then again, we haven't been called a desert for every business before, so. There is some added value.
I think. Um, and then I think the other thing we were, I'm just thinking visually, like, I know when Matt did the story, it was like he looked at, um, I, at least one part of it was like the entering Stowe signs. Um, so it might be kind of cool if you guys were able to provide us with like a Dunk, like, do you have like a Dunkin' magnet? Or something that like could stick over the entering, like if we were gonna do that just for the day for the um Stowe sign? Um, just because I think that's a cool visual on top, like it'll, A, it's your, it's your branding. Um, and then just to do that for, for pictures for the day. And then we could obviously take it down, because I feel like our police chief is sitting there like, how do I tell when people are going into Stowe? Are you committing a crime in Dunkin'? I don't know, I don't know all the legalities.
We're crime-free that day.
We're crime-free that day. It's just donuts and coffee for everyone.
Purge.
Yeah, we're gonna have a Stow nut, we're gonna, we're gonna.
Oh, I love it. That's so great.
Yeah, that is something that we can definitely do, gets, even if it's just ends up being for the photos, but getting something to put over on the sign, we can definitely do that.
I love that.
And if you guys, uh, the specs of how big the road signs are, that would be great, just so we can measure it out accordingly.
I can drive out there.
I'll figure it out.
We, we can measure the name of Stowe, so the magnet just covers Stowe, yes.
Um, no, I think this is, I, it, this is so exciting and to be able to kind of um spin this in a positive for the town is just awesome, and to be able to do it with the Dunkin' as well. And, you know, Megan, I, you guys have, I, I absolutely love all of your stores in the area. I work in Acton, it's, we, we know everything, so. Um, so yeah, thank you so much and thank you so much for coming in and, and opening this location. Um.
I don't know if you could buy, I just wanna add really quickly.
Yeah.
You will be the only um Dunkin' Donuts a- anywhere that has a porch swing.
Oh.
I'm really excited to uh have that beautiful front porch and we now have a donut porch swing out there.
Oh my god. That's awesome.
Yeah.
I love that.
Oh, that's what I wanted at a, at a fun, a Dunkin' fundraiser auction. I'm like, Grace, I'm Dexter, I'm like, this is so good, that's a stone porch.
That's amazing.
Don't do it in Dunkin', Massachusetts. Yes.
That's amazing, amazing. Um, do you have any other questions?
And everything's okay as far as the police, yeah.
Yeah, coffee, coffee's coming.
Coffee.
They're like, we don't have any problems. You have any questions?
Uh, if it's a plaque instead of a key, I know there was discussion of that, would that be something that would like be in the building from, from there on? Or what's the plan with the key or plaque or whatever it is?
I think if we were thinking about providing it.
No, I think Dan's asking if they would hang it up.
Oh, oh, right.
Where would it, where, would it go in the, in the franchise?
Can we put the door in the store? Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
With your Dunkin' Desert.
Even if you did both, if we had a key, you know, the plaque, I'd be, I'm happy to, we have, we have plenty of wall space in there. We're, we're currently working on a, a sort of timeline iteration of the whole storyline with some of the T-shirts that were made and some pictures of that and, and Stowe, some, some places around Stowe. So I am looking, if, if, if anyone can help, um, I haven't been able to track down any pictures of, of the beef and ale, like, in its dead. Um, so I've, I've gone on Facebook, I'm trying to get, um, I've reached out to Historical Society. So if there's, if anyone has anything, please, in the next, you know, few days even, we'd love to, we'd love to add that to the, to the whole, the launch.
Awesome.
Can put out some messages on her Facebook page and stuff.
Yeah, we certainly can.
Yeah. Did you have any questions? No? All right, so we're gonna need a motion. Have you been working on a motion?
I've made a motion.
Shh, Mr. Tool, I will take a motion then.
Madam Chair, I move that on July twenty-fourth, the select board, uh, for July twenty-fourth, the select board approved the one-day name change of the town of Stowe to Dunkin' on a ceremonial basis with a presentation of a permanent plaque.
Sure.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. So congratulations, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to it. We'll see you, we'll see you on the twenty-fourth.
So great, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, everyone, that Grace was all.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, may I ask a favor?
Madam Town Administrator, you may.
Can we take the traffic safety item, because that should be a quick agenda, we have two police folks here.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can call down a, um.
I would love that.
I love that too.
Oh, right.
Well, the next item, I don't know how long it's gonna be, so I don't want you to have to wait.
Thank you. We needed to make sure you understood that Dunkin' was coming and all, so now. Okay. I'm ready to hear all about taking the rumble strips out on Sudbury Road. Would you like to add?
Sure.
As you know, that the boards back in January of twenty twenty-four voted that we should establish a twenty mile an hour uh safety zone uh between two seventy-seven Sudbury Road and three twenty-two, right near Pine Bluffs. Um, during the meeting, the board al- not only approved that, actually voted to put down rumble strips. Um, we purchased those, uh, we put them down. We've been monitoring traffic in that area.
Okay.
And we find that the rumble strips are making little to no impact uh to slow people down. We've made numerous motor vehicle stops, um, but what we're getting reported, what I'm getting reported back from the officers are is that they're having little to no effect. They're, they're not um having the desired effect that we have. I think there are maintenance on them for, we have to, they're not, since they're not nailed to the ground.
Okay.
Uh, because that'll uh ruin the pavement and then if ice and water get in there, we're constantly moving them back into place. Uh, I, I suggest that we, uh, that we remove them, that the board gives us, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, the authority to, to remove them. Since you voted and ordered us to put them there, we can't just remove them without your consent, so.
Um, does anybody have any questions about that?
Is there any thought as far as putting some sort of a replacement of those rumble strips to get the desired effect of slowing traffic down?
Yeah, we're actually like looking at everything that we could do in that area to slow traffic down. As far as an actual replacement, um, I don't know what that could be right now, but we are still trying to come up with more ideas because um, you know, the, the speed is ever increasing on that road, and we're well aware of that. But I don't, I can't. And we're well aware of that. But I don't, I can't come to you and say, yeah, we're gonna put up an actual speed bump, cause that's like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's a lot of money. So, the good thing with these is we can redeploy them for to, throughout, throughout other areas of town, just to remind people of what the speed limit is.
Uh, two questions. One, ballpark average, you said like ever increasing speed, like that you're seeing, um, are you seeing like average forty, forty-five, higher?
Yep, uh, so average speed on, on the citations that have been issued down there, which is over a couple hundred, has been about forty-five miles an hour.
And that's a twenty mile an hour safety zone.
Twenty-five, yeah. It's a twenty mile an hour, yes.
And, um, obviously like a permanent speed bump, very expensive. Um, I have the, I don't know if like, like this would even be possible on a road. I've seen in parking lots, the temporary speed bumps, um, that are able to be physically moved.
That's what they are. They're just ineffective.
Yeah, my, my apologies.
I think, were you thinking the larger like table sized speed bumps that you see?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, I've, cause there's different prices. Those that I was thinking of and then there's the smaller ones, you're clearly.
So we have to really look at like what, what device are we putting down there? And what impact can that have on all sorts of vehicles? Not only the, uh, passenger cars, trucks, motorcycles. If a motorcycle, you know, is going at a high rate of speed, which they're not supposed to be doing, and they hit those and we don't have the proper illumination, I mean, that Sudbury Road has no tra, has no streetlights on it. So we need. So we need to, um, make sure that we are covering, we, make sure that we're covering, um, all of our residents and guests that are traveling that way. It makes it safe.
Okay.
So it was between two seventy-seven Sudbury and what was the other address?
It's three twenty-two Sudbury.
Right near Pine Bluffs.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
We have two of them out there right now. I did take, we, we have three total, those two, and we have a, a spare one. And I did use it the other day on Marlboro Road for a little while while there was traffic, uh, there was construction going on in Hudson. So it was, because what, they were diverting all the traffic down Marlboro Road. So to help those residents, I put it down for a while. So we would do, be doing the same thing. Now we'll have three at our disposal. The Traffic Safety Committee would have it at our disposal to put it wherever we needed to.
Okay.
You said you're still looking into different ways to.
Yeah, we're always looking into different ways. So whatever that it means is, is it pavement markings, is it, um, you know, uh, natural commu devices? You know, some of the things we look at is like, you know, if you, if you grow your vegetation near the road, it gives the optical illusion that you're traveling faster and the road width is still the same. You know, cause it's making the road look small, narrower, but it's really not. Same thing we did on Hudson Road. You know, we put the, uh, this, the pavement markings, you know, instead of twelve feet lanes, we just made them eleven feet. So it actually gives you that illusion that you're going faster than you are to help slow you down. We wanna make people, we don't want that officers be the reason people are slowing down. Like, we have to make the roadway in such a way that it's, people want to travel the speed limit, not enforcement, tickets, you know, it's, because we're only there for a certain amount of time.
Right.
The ticket affects one person, you know, one time and in a moment.
Change the incentive, yeah.
Change the incentive, exactly.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that you have brought it back to us, that it wasn't working and that we just didn't let it go on forever. Um, just, any other questions?
No, the question's just a comment. I know the situation. I lived down there and actually, I've been on the road where somebody has actually gotten out and turned them into the middle stripe, which isn't gonna help anybody.
Right.
So.
Interesting. Saw that.
Huh?
I didn't know you saw that.
Oh, I sure did.
Conversation would have been.
What?
I said, I would have liked to have a conversation with that individual, but that's neither here nor there.
Um, alright, I will take a motion on that then.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the quest, request of the Traffic Safety Committee to remove the rumble strips that were placed on Sudbury Road.
I second the quest and the request.
Um, and any further discussion? Nope. Seeing none. All those in favor? Alright, that's unanimous. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Alrighty, um, let's do Traffic Safety Committee. Nope, that's, was that one. Comprehensive Plan Committee Presentation. I was getting there. Um, alright. Who's presenting?
I did send the presentation a bit late. Did you get that?
I did. I'm just trying to pull it up.
And you are?
I'm Jen Goldson. I'm the Planning Consultant.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, you can be right here.
Do you mind if I sit?
No, alright. Big enough table.
Uh, well, happy to be here. I've been working with, um, the lovely Comprehensive Plan Committee. It's, some members are here. Thanks for being here. And Hector and Dan, of course. Um, we've, we're getting, we're getting far along now. And we wanted to make sure that you had an update, kind of before the plan was ready for official approval by the planning board. And I think we have the planning board here. Is that right? Everybody in the back here? Yeah. Oh, you too. Wonderful.
And Laurie is on soon.
I don't know if you need to formally open the planning board meeting or.
Um, I can't at the moment, cause we're sharing the screen.
Does, does the planning board need to formally open now that you moved over to this room? Or I'm not, just not sure of the procedure. You're still in a meeting. Okay, perfect, perfect. So I prepared a short presentation, um, and, uh, and happy to ask questions. Or no, I'm not gonna ask you any questions. Happy to answer questions. And I think you've been getting updates, um, in your packet and whatnot. Okay, good. Alright, so I'm gonna go over kind of high level, but of course, if there's any questions you have about stuff that I don't go over, you're welcome to ask me. So, uh, I'm Jen Goldson. I own JM Goldson, a planning firm in Boston. And like I said, we've been working for almost, I don't know, over a year for sure. I, I've lost track of the time, maybe closer to eighteen months. Um, and then my colleague Austin, um, is at almost all of the meetings, but he's, he happens to be on vacation this week. So, um, but he's very closely involved with the project and, uh, and has done a lot of work on it as well. So today I'll just cover just where we are in the planning process. Um, just some of the engagement themes that we heard and some of the engagement, um, results. And then a quick plan overview focusing on core themes and goals, but not getting into the nitty gritty. Uh, we'll go over the future land use map a little bit. That really just gives a vision of the, of the strategies mapped out. And then what's next with upcoming public comment and if there, um, is any thought to additional analyses we can do, we thought we'd present those. And I'll, I can tell you why in a, in a, in five or six bullet points. Um, alright, so we are close to the very end. Um, we've already gone through, um, you know, quite a bit of work as you, as you, I'm sure followed along with just starting to understand the community back in September twenty twenty-three. Oh, it has been that long. Okay. And you probably saw the, the culmination of that report. Actually, why don't you go to the next slide? Um, that report was, was the summary of existing conditions and we just really looked at all the data we could get our hands on. We looked at a whole bunch of existing studies and other plans and put together, um, in kind of the standard comprehensive plan themes, what we saw as some, um, current issues and where you've come from and some trends that we noticed. And at that point, sorry, you can stay there for a second. At that point in the, one slide, yeah. At that point, we worked with the committee to say, we, we really like to set a numerical goal for engagement. We think it kind of lights a fire under the, the, the folks we're working with to, to get the word out if they have a number. Um, if it's very vague, we find that people are like, oh, you know, it's just, it just gets, the process gets more vague. So we like to ask our clients to set a goal. And we typically recommend ten percent um, as equivalent to ten percent. It's not that you would get ten percent of your population, but that we would collect participation points. Some of them, maybe many of them would be repeat folks. Um, but the idea is can we set a number? And what, what you guys wanted to do, we were a little worried at first. You wanted to do fifteen percent. So we said, that's amazing. Let's do it. We're, we're up for the challenge. And the good news is, if you go to the next slide, um, you exceeded that. So you not only met that really ambitious goal, but you exceeded that. And so in just phase two, we collected, or I should really say the committee collected, they were really, um, on the ground doing this work. We just kind of supplied them with materials. Um, they collected almost thirteen hundred engagement points, just in that phase. So that was very impressive and you can see some of the different ways that they collected that. Some of it was online, some of it was in person. And we do find that that kind of mix is really good because not everyone's gonna come out in person, but some people love to come out in person. So next pha, next phase is, um, the one we just basically closed, which is coming up with, uh, the strategies that focus on the goals that the engagement created. Does that make sense? So in phase two, I kind of skipped over, what did we do in phase two other than engagement? We created the community vision and goals based on that community input. And then working really closely with the committee, um, with wordsmithing and making sure that all of the topics are covered and, and that kind of thing. And then in phase three, we really focused on, how do you put some meat to those bones? You know, goals are very general. I'll go through them in a minute. Um, how do you think about, um, you know, different ways you can achieve those goals? They could be, uh, rumble strips that didn't work, or they could be, um, you know, events. You're talking about doing events. There could be things like that. It could also be things like zoning or other local initiatives or, um, even new boards or committees, things like that. Alright, so that's what happened in phase three. And then the committee really wanted to do another round of engagement. And so, um, the town was able to secure a grant to have us do some additional engagement. And you were actually able to add another two hundred, just over two hundred engagement points, which is great in this phase. We've had much bigger communities add like sixty points in this phase, if they, you know, if they wanna do engagement. So people just, um, I have a bunch of theories as to why that's so. It could be that people are, you know, a little tired. We're talking about it for a long time. Didn't we already give our input? And most people tend to think in that bigger picture. Um, you know, the goals and vision is something that, that most, most people in most communities I've found can really sink their teeth into. But when you get into the nitty gritty of how you're gonna do something, unless it's actually proposed, you know, people might come out, um, for that, but, but people are a little bit less engaged, or maybe they feel like a little bit, I'm not qualified, you know, I don't know, know how this all plays out. So, so this is a great engagement and this was basically your extra engagement after you've already exceeded your goal. Next phase is where we are now, and that's the next slide. Really, we have the content ready, um, based on all of that other work. All that work was leading up to, you know, the first three phases is really creating the content. And now we're putting it together into what will, you'll think hopefully is a beautiful plan, that's very easy to read. And that any, any, Benny could pick up and feel really proud of being in Stowe and living in Stowe and being part of the community, but also understand where you are heading in the next decade, or where you aim to head and where your priorities are. So that's what we're doing now, is laying it out. It seems like a very like mechanical thing. But actually, I think this is such an important phase that we get the layout right. Because, um, if it's a kind of your standard word document, I think you just lose people. Um, so we're really aiming to make like a coffee table book for your community. And there'll be another, um, spreadsheet. It's a, so we do this, the coffee table book, as I call it, is your plan. Um, but then there's an associated spreadsheet that we'll do with all of the details of like timing for, you know, phases over the next decade of when each strategy could be done. And of course, you can change it as it goes. Um, who's responsible? What's the primary department? What are, you know, what are the committees involved? What are the supporting even organizations in the community? Don't always have to be a municipal entity that's, that's involved. And then we look at, um, we give you ideas for funding sources. Some of them, you know, would be funded by the town. And other things, we try to find state, federal, see how that goes, but state funds for sure. And other, you know, sometimes we can even find private funds or, or recommend, um, creative ways people put together private, public, private partnerships. So we give you case studies, um, example documents, like if another community we know has done something similar, we'll give you links to where you can find out more. So that's in the spreadsheet. We don't like to bog down the coffee table document with all those details. So we give you this spreadsheet that then, we, we also recommend that you create a implementation committee. Going off script here. Austin didn't think I'd go through all this. Um, but the implementation committee would then be in charge of the spreadsheet. And what we recommend is that the spreadsheet live online, so that the progress toward achieving each strategy is very transparent and there'll be a column for the, the committee or department manager. I'm, I don't wanna micromanage how you do it, but the idea is that there'll be a, a column in the spreadsheet saying what's the status of, of each of these things. It could be, we tried it, couldn't get approved. We tried to get funds, couldn't get it. Or it could be, we've completed this, or it's in progress, so that it's a very transparent. So that's the idea of the spreadsheet. Alright. And then the, the only real vote that's required is the planning board, although a lot of, um, communities also want endorsement by the select board. And some even bring it to town meeting for endorsement, but you don't, those are not requirements. Alright, so let's go on to the next, next one. So what we heard, we did a few quotes, but I'm just gonna focus on the big, the big kind of text there. Um, we heard from community members that you wanna balance. You understand that there'll be some growth, just because the population is growing in the region, but you really want some balance. Um, your open space, your agricultural lands, the feeling of Stowe, the historic nature of your villages, all of those things are important. And so that balance was really important. So you see, we have one whole core theme just on balance. And then promoting civic and social engagement, continuing that. I think people really like what you've been doing. Probably not just with the comp plan, but we heard a lot of positive things about the work that the committee's been doing. Um, and they're like, let's keep this kind of engagement going. Um, prioritizing affordability and livability and improving transportation. And then, um, sustainability and conservation were, were also main themes that we heard. So you'll see that we translated, you can go to the next slide, we translated what we heard into core themes and you can go to the next one. Yeah, that's good. Um, so there's a vision statement. I didn't include that in the, in the presentation, just cause it's a little long. We like to write it in a very customized way. And in order to make it feel very much like Stowe, it needs to be longer than a couple of sentences. We find in the plans that have super short visions, you could transplant that vision to any community and it, it could fit. And we don't, we wanna give you something really customized, so it's longer. Uh, but I think it's better for that purpose. But I didn't put it in the PowerPoint for that reason. Um, there are five core themes, as I mentioned before. The first one is balancing priorities. Um, the second is fostering inclusive participat, uh, what did we call it? Participation and opportunity. And you can see these are closely aligned to those themes we heard in the engagement. Um, enhancing a livable community, and that has to do not just with housing, but all the things that make the community livable. Expanding opportunity, uh, transportation options. And then building commu, community resilience. And that's, you know, includes sustainability and resilience, but it's beyond that. And then you can see we have a few goals for each of them and several strategies. There are eighty-nine strategies total. Um, but don't be shocked, that's over a decade. And so it's about eight point nine strategies per year. Some of them are longer than others. Some of them may be bigger lifts. Some of them you're probably already working towards, so they might be a little bit low hanging fruit, so. And, you know, some of them, the way I look at this, it's really not a blueprint. Are there any engineers or architects or anybody like that in the room? Nobody. Okay, well, alright, there you go. So, so blueprints are something you build every single thing on the blueprint. And if, you know, if you don't, then whatever you're building is gonna break or fail, or you'll get sued or whatever. This is not what that is. This is more like a roadmap. And I like to say, you plug in it, you know, you know, plug your destination into Waze or Google Map or Apple Map, whatever you use, and that's your goal. And it gives you several ways to get there. You know, one of them has no tolls. One of them goes by the grocery store you wanna stop at. And so you, you, you kind of go these different routes and you may change if, oh gosh, there's a lot of traffic here, go, go a different way. That's how I view the strategies. I don't think that you're going to actually implement all eighty-nine, a hundred percent the way they're written. But it gives you a lot of options. And I bet you'll probably implement a lot of them. There might not be in the exact version it's in today, because nine years from now, there may be completely different technology or different brand programs or just a different best practice. So that's why we, we don't wanna hang your hat so hard. I don't know, I think I just made up that idiom on the strategy idea, but it's a lot of ideas for you. Okay, does that make sense? Okay, so next one. Um, so I just. Um also, I'm just gonna go through, oh, I didn't, I cut the vision out, so we're just gonna go through core themes. Go to the next one. Um so, uh yeah, let's just, oh, well, one thing I wanna say about this, I already told you what the core themes were. But what I haven't said yet, oh, it's Dan in there. What I haven't said yet is that the committee really saw this idea of having a common thread uh um of weaving all the parts together around participatory decision-making. And it really touches on everything. And it came out so strong in the engagement that it's, it's also this number two theme where we're talking about participation, but they really wanted to see it kind of weaving through the whole plan to tie it together. Um so that's why that's, that's on the slide, next slide. So under balancing priorities, there are four goals. One is focus housing development to maximize land and infrastructure use. So to be, you know, some people don't like the term smart growth anymore, so I try not to use it, but but it's, it is, it's hard to find another term, it is kind of smart growth. Um second one is improve services and infrastructure to support housing economy and resilience. And I know you're already talking about these things, but it's important that we capture them in the plan um since they're long-term goals. Strengthen ties between the community and business growth. And I thought that was a great example that I listened to with the Duncan, Massachusetts and all the stuff you're doing, like that's a great example of how you strengthen ties between the business community. Um boost local economy through agritourism and considering the resident impact. So there's this two sides of the coin with the agritourism. It's, you know, your farming really I de- defines a lot of how people view your community. And it, of course, is also economic for you. And a lot of people, including me, come out to get their Christmas tree last year and 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 I, you know, I firsthand saw the traffic and the parking. And I can only imagine what that's like as a resident. And I'm sure the residents love it and hate it all at the same time. Um so that was all about balancing those priorities, number four. Next one is um about inclusivity, participation and opportunity. So the first goal is promote community-led economic growth, diverse businesses and financial sustainability. Um expand, oh, you're looking at all the pictures. I'm like, what am I missing? Expand public spaces for community building and resource sharing. Um and then prioritize diverse inclusive input on local projects, local initiatives. Next one. Enhancing livable community, ensuring diverse, accessible, affordable housing for mixed-use and multi-generational living. Improve public services to foster connections and cultural engagement. So I thought this one was an interesting one and it kind of gets through the um a little bit of that weaving of the thread of engagement. You you'll see that popping up here and there. Um preserve local history, indigenous presence, historic sites, open space and farms. And the indigenous presence kept coming up and we understood that it was something, you know, a lot of our communities um don't really think about indigenous presence unless we, you know, kind of prod that. But that's not the case with your community and I was really impressed with that. Um maintains, so meaning you guys thought of it before we did, yeah, just to finish my sentence. Maintain small-town character to strengthen community identity and pride. And the character was really important to people. I mean, I think you might say that almost everyone lives here because of this community and the way it feels to live here. And even what it's, you know, people come here to get away sometimes, or I don't know, maybe a lot, from things that they left behind. And I'm not saying those places were bad, but this is such a special character and and that really came through very strong. Next slide is number four, expanding transportation options. So improve connectivity with Stowe and neighboring communities. So, you know, one thing I know we talked about is um the bike path and other things like that. You know, we're trying to be realistic about, you know, having a small town. You're not gonna get a new train, you're not gonna, you know. But we're trying to look at, how can we improve connectivity? Um support alternative transportation like shuttles and buses. Um now, those are also expensive, so some regional cooperation, thinking about creative ways to do it. Develop safe, accessible, walking, rolling, biking. So sometimes people say, what the heck is rolling? So it could be like rolling your stroller. Um it could be rolling in a wheelchair, it could be rollerblading, it could be um um, I don't know, I don't even know all the new, the new technologies, scooters, things like that. Exactly, yeah. And then e-bikes could fall under biking, but it's all kind of things that are not wa- you know, things that are not driving and not trains, not buses, et cetera. Um managing peak traffic and parking to reduce resident disruption. And that is getting back to the agritourism and those impacts and thinking about how to, how to handle that. Alright, next slide. And then I, actually, I think this is the last one. Number five, integrate sustainability in housing economy and trans- transport for long-term resilience. Um preserving open space to protect biodiversity habitats farmland. And you'll see when I show you the future land use map, we incorporated, you know, you've already identified these areas, but we just incorporated those future conservation areas um or hopefully future conservation areas into the map. Ensure flexible public spaces that adapt to community needs. And um and then pursuing renovations and upgrades um for climate resilience and emission reduction. So every word in every single goal was thought about very, very carefully by by the committee in particular. And um so, you know, it's not that I can't change, but I just wanted you to know that they had a lot of discussion around what should this include? What should it not include? How should we say it? Next slide. Okay, and then that common thread I talked about, a participatory decision-making. Next slide. Alright, so let's get into the future land use map and then I'm almost done. I know you have other things on your agenda. So this map is really just a visual representation of the things that are, that I basically just told you and the strategies in there. But it it shows, we have these um, what is there, eight different categories. And the categories are not magic, there's nothing magic about this. We basically customize this for every community. Um and so um we work with the community, other committee to really figure out, what should we call these areas? Like there are certain areas for economic opportunity. Um mixed-use villages and housing opportunity, neighborhood planning areas, um enhanced connectivity corridors, uh existing conservation areas. We did put on there as an actual thing on the legend, although sometimes it's just part of the base map. But but they wanted to really highlight that. And then potential future conservation priorities in that dark or green. Local agriculture. And then baseline neighborhood evolution, we're just recognizing there's not any real plans for those neighborhoods, but neighbors, you know, neighborhoods evolve over time. And, you know, you'll probably have some ADUs popping up and things like that, so. Okay, next slide is just a more detailed version of that legend. And I don't, I don't, I expect you to read all that right this moment, but I just want you to know that each of those categories on the legend has kind of a specific meaning and we tried to elaborate on that um in a more annotated legend. And um, yeah, and I think that's it. Other than, there was some, the grant, I don't know if you wanna talk about this at all, but tell me if I'm overstepping at all, okay? So there was the grant money that the the town received to do the additional engagement and it turned out we just didn't need it all. Um and so there's, there's some funding leftover. And we're happy to do some more like detailed technical analysis. And we just wanted some guidance, if you feel like one or both of these studies could be helpful to you. Um if there's something else you think would be more useful, we're happy to talk about other things. But one thing that we do for a lot of our comp plans um is a build-out analysis, which basically, it doesn't say what's really gonna be built, it just says what could potentially be built under your current zoning. And it gives you how, you know, how many units, how much gross square footage of commercial space or industrial space. And it gives you um the kind of units, or generally, it, you know, can tell you how many single-family homes, how many, you know, multifamily, et cetera. But it's only by right. Um so we look at, so if it needs special permit, that's not part of this. Cuz we can't assume that it's gonna get a special permit. We can only look at the things that are actually by right, that someone could go to the building department tomorrow and get a building permit for. So we look at, we do, it's pretty detailed. We actually look at um, we look at your improvement to land value ratio, which basically just tells us like which parcels could be potentially redeveloped. Like if there's something on there, if it's just a parking lot, it's probably not worth, the parking lot itself is probably not worth as the, as much as the land underneath it. And so that in our mind is a redevelopment site if it's zoned for some kind of higher invest use. So we basically go through, it's a GIS analysis and we go through and look at all these parcels. Um identify what, which ones have redevelopment potential, which ones are not built on, which ones have environmental constraints. And we don't go out and flag things, um but we can just look on mass GIS layers or if the town has any other layers, we're ha- we're happy to use those. But basically, we just look in a general way, where are those environmental constraints? And where's the buildable land? And if you, you know, if you're required to have an X percentage of open space to have a single-family lot, an X percentage, whatever, parking spaces, we actually have built all of that into our model. Um I don't wanna get too nerdy, but it's, it's a pretty detailed analysis. You basically get a map and a spreadsheet, so it doesn't, doesn't look that detailed, but there's a lot that goes into it. Um and so that would be one thing, it it's kind of um, the the reason I don't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I shouldn't, I'm not a good salesperson, cuz I'm gonna tell you why I don't like this. I don't like this, I don't like it because it often scares people to think, oh my gosh, we're gonna get twenty million, whatever. And that's not true, it's not predicting the future. Um it's just telling you what your zoning says you could do and then it weighs it against those environmental constraints and some, some market realities, but it's not like a, it's actually gonna happen tomorrow. Uh but it helps you makes, make some land use decisions. Um there are some zoning strategies in the, in the plan as it stands, the draft plan. And so this can help you kind of, well, we don't want, I'm just gonna make up what I, what it could say. You know, maybe it says that on these open space parcels, you're hoping to acquire someday or preserve or agricultural lands, you could build a lot of houses on those. The way that the plan is written would help you not build the houses there and build them somewhere else. So it could help you in terms of those considerations. Uh but it is scary for people when they don't understand it first, like what it means and what it doesn't, okay? Alright, the next one is um a zoning audit. Um this is kind of a um, you know, the next step in your comp plan once it's adopted, is typically that the town would either hire someone or do it themselves, where they'll go through your zoning bylaw and kind of flag the 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 areas that would need to change. Because sometimes it's not as easy as, well, just to adopt a new overlay district. Sometimes there are other things that also need to change to make sure everything works together smoothly. And so this is a, this is um, the way we price this out is that we tried to, we tried to price it so that what's left in your grant, we could do both of these things if you want us to. Um but I just wanted to give you the caveat that the way that would work is that the high-level review and redline is pretty high level. We've, we've basically um budgeted four hours, a half-day of my senior planner's time. So it's not like a super detailed thing, it's high level and then we would give you that summary memo. Um what I wanted to say is if you felt like the zoning audit was more useful to you than the build-out, we could spend more time on the zoning audit and give you a much more detailed evaluation and redline. So I just wanted to present it in a way that that made sense, but it's up to you guys. And of course, you don't need to do either one. Alright, and that's everything and I'm, I'm happy to answer questions. And I don't know if any members of the committee wanted to add anything or Valerie?
Wanna hear from them.
Um, well, two of you are on it, did you wanna speak first or do you wanna?
Alright, I'd like to hear it.
Okay.
From my colleagues.
Fantastic.
What she said. Not much really to add, we've come quite a long way, it's been a year of a lot of hard work. And now we're in the final stages. As you mentioned, one of the things that the uh committee has been really pushing for is, this is a town thing, this isn't a town government issue. It's not a select board or a planning board or a comprehensive plan com- board.
Yep.
Issue, it's for all the town to get involved and participate in it and be a part of it.
Can you just clarify what you meant by the redline half-day piece at the end there?
Yeah, the zoning audit, yeah, it's super high level. So we'd have our, our senior planner, Laura Smead, who you guys haven't met, she does a lot of our zoning work. Um she would go through the zoning bylaw to key areas that um would be affected if you adopted the strategies in the, in the comp plan and basically start to redline where the things need to change. Um but it's a ha- it's a four-hour review, that's how we had to budget it if we were gonna do both the build-out analysis and the zoning. Um but if you felt like it would be more useful to have more of her time, then we would probably not be able to do the build-out.
Pretend the, the presentation would be four hours.
No, her work on.
Time spent.
The ti- her time spent on it, so.
Her time, sitting down with your bylaw, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, there's leftover money. So what she's presented at the very end of it is our two options that we could do with the leftover money. The way that she's budgeted it is the second option, only, we would only get four hours of time. So either, the, and I don't, I'm saying we, I don't know who's spending this money. I don't know if it's the planning board, I don't, I mean, I, so, but that's, that's basically what you're saying, right? Um so at some point, someone will need to make a decision about how the rest of the grant money is being spent. But these are the options that she's provided us with so far. Yes, good.
And if we didn't do the build-out, I'm sure if I may ask the question, um how much more time would be put into the audit? Say we wanted to just do the audit.
Yeah.
Um how much more in-depth and how much more information would we be able to um?
Yeah, she could spend, um, I mean, I'm doing this very roughly in my head cuz someone else does the build-out at a different rate. Um but I would say that she could probably spend two days, um so sixteen hours or so. Don't hold me to the exact number, but that's kind of roughly.
Okay, so it almost seems like workbang for the buck, uh if you will, uh with the audit, which would give us, I think, more information to work from, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, I think it's just two different buckets of information. So I think it's, it, uh, to me, it ultimately would be what the, I mean, since so much of this information is planning board information, um it would be what they feel like is going to drive their planning moving forward better. So is it, do we have zoning bylaws that are popping up in the next couple of years? Would you really want some input on that? Or do you wanna know kind of land use, how many more houses, all of that stuff? And so I think it would really have to, I mean, in my humble opinion, would have to be more, more what's going to help them to drive those decisions. Um I wanna say as somebody who has kind of been following this peripherally, um this was a fascinating presentation, thank you so much for pulling it all together. Thank you so much for um kind of calling all of the many hours of work. I know that all of you have been working on this on the comprehensive plan committee. Um I sat in on one of the working sessions and it, was it a working session? I don't know, whatever I sat in on for a couple of hours. Um and it was great and it really, I I appreciate you saying that thread of the community participation because I really do feel like that is where this community um really thrives and what's been so special about being here. And I think that um to be able to take that move and to kind of codify that moving forward and the comprehensive plan for what we want to happen for the town is really a, a gift. So um, great job, guys, for all of your hard work. Um.
I wonder if uh Lori has any comments?
Yeah, sure. Lori, are you unmuted?
Yes, I am unmuted, hello everyone.
Hello.
Um, I mean, I am on the planning board, but I am also on the comprehensive plan committee. And I would say, as we've gotten into the details, you know, there are a lot of strategies and we've tried hard to get input on those from both uh other boards and committees and um in the public. But I think, you know, eighty-nine strategies to get input on can be overwhelming. Um so I think that's been one of the challenges. Um in terms of uh what Jen was proposing tonight, um the planning board hasn't yet discussed um those things. So uh we can certainly uh do that and um and make recommendations back, but we can also talk about it with the comprehensive plan committee as well. Um but I would invite other planning board members if you have comments or questions.
Oh, fantastic, yeah.
I really like the zoning audit idea. Um as you described it, I could envision locations around town and I would assume that would include residential zoning, right? So it almost would include a bit of a build-out analysis within the bigger picture?
Well, not in the way we use the word build-out analysis. Um we would really look through all of the, you know, sections of your zoning bylaw. Um you know, parking, all the uses, you know, everything. Um and I think in a, if, if she did have. Um and I think in a, if if she did have several days to do it rather than half a day, I think I personally, and I I know I'm leading you along to do this on the zoning end, not the buildout, but but I do think it would be more useful for you at the end, yeah.
Yeah, things are changing, it would be good to have that vision.
So would the the zoning review also focus on, since the interrelationship between the strategies and the zoning? So there might be some review that said, this is gonna really inhibit some of these strategies, or if this zoning was changed in this way, it would really support some of these strategies, 'cause I think that would be quite helpful.
Yeah, that's exactly what it would do. Um to the point where you, you know, you may need new zoning. It could be something that we say, you know, add this section about blah-bitty blah. Um but it could also be things like, you know, this cross-reference to your parking. You know, what, like, I know zoning bylaws can get so complicated with all of like the the amendments that have happened over, you know. So looking carefully for those kind of conflicts, sometimes there are conflicts. And um I'm sure the staff knows all about them, but then you can kind of help identify, like, this should be redlined, you know, we're gonna redline, basically, we'll give you a redline, like literally, we'll redline your zoning bylaw, yeah. If we can have the word version, then we'll redline it, yeah.
Yep, with the uh remaining grant funds, are these the the two best options that you recommend? Or there are like others that, like, hey, there are theoretically other options? Um and then, this might be a silly question, but if the grant funds just theoretically go unused, they're just unused? Is there anything more than that, anything lost in that?
Yeah, I mean, if it's a grant and we have X amount of dollars, we would have to return what's not spent.
That's it, it's that simple, yeah.
The only other.
We're not giving any money back.
The only other thing I I I can think of, um, I'm not sure why we didn't put this in the presentation, but um we can support the implementation committee for several months um by helping them establish the baseline metrics and helping them kind of get underway with understanding, you know, how to how to run the implement. You know, it's kind of like strategic organizing when a new committee is up and running. So we could basically help out for, I don't know how many months, I'd have to do that budget. I didn't do that particular budget, but but several months, we could come to those meetings and help them in between, get organized and up and running and and get the metric. You know, we do recommend that the implementation committee starts with baseline metrics to to basically measure um progress on goals. And so just establishing that baseline is sometimes a hurdle for a new committee. Um keeping it updated is a little easier, 'cause we'll tell you like where you can get each piece of data, but yeah.
Yeah. So the implementation committee is really a, almost becomes a permanent committee, 'cause you expect them for the life of the plan. So we're looking to create a committee for the next ten years. Maybe not the same people, 'cause obviously people come and go, but so that's what, that's what one of the asks would be, is to create a long-term committee.
Correct.
And do you have, based on your experience, is, what's the correct number of people to be on a committee like that?
Yeah.
Um because you don't want too many, but you don't want not enough involvement. So what's the right number that you've seen?
You know, ideally, nine is a nice number, maybe seven to nine. And it gets, you know, you want some representation from the different entities that will be responsible to implement, you know, you want some liaison kind of role. So you'll need to think about that. And then, just if I may add one thing to that, one thing we like to re- re- and we'll write this into your, we have an implementation chapter we'll give you with recommendations, but we like to have it written into their charter, bylaw, whatever you use to establish them, um some mandated reporting, um so that at least on some regular basis, it could be annually, semi-annually, whatever you decide, they need to come to the select board and probably the planning board. I mean, it's up to you how you wanna word it, but um and report out on the progress. It gives some accountability, and then they would also, I'm assuming you have an annual report that you write, yeah. So they'd also be required to um add something to the annual report. So we find that they can become, they kind of, uh, how do I put this? They just kind of fizzle out a little bit if they don't have some real visibility.
Denise, when you said it would be permanent, would it be so like renewed every ten years kind of thing? Or would it be temporary for that, like, not like permanent, permanent?
No, but I would envision it's not like a one-year ad hoc just to implement. It's a, you're looking for a committee, so ideally, you'd have this committee now in perpetuity. And then in ten years, when you have a new plan, you, the implementation committee would continue just working with a new plan. Again, people.
That was my assumption.
Whether you created nine people, three-year terms, every three years to rotate, you know, just to keep things moving, that's fine, however you wanna structure it. But it wouldn't just be like a one-year to kick it off sort of committee.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
Any other questions? Are you ready? Thank you so much for your time, we really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming down, guys, we appreciate it.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Good luck for the rest of your meeting. Okay, Brady.
See you Thursday.
Um all right, uh next up on our agenda is the um Hometown Heroes Program Discussion. Denise, do you wanna just kick that off and? It's, I mean, it's not, sorry, we're kicking nothing off, Denise just needs to give us a.
Yes, so.
It's a discussion in that Denise is going to give us an update on this, and then we can move forward.
So thank you, as you know, we've talked about this in the past, um we started to have some movements. Uh but I really felt the next step is the board should formally vote to proceed with this program.
Yeah.
Um and then what I would ask the board is to allow me to create a working group that we've gathered data from other communities on their criteria, um you know, the requirements, all of that information. So I would ask that a working group get together, review, and make a recommendation back to this board about what you'd like to see, you know, is it, were they born in Stowe, do they have to live in Stowe, what's the? I mean, I don't know what we're looking at for veterans about, um, you know, if we have a too broad of a criteria.
Right.
Um I, you know, so I think having a working group come back here and say to you, we're looking for from the Shaws Plaza to Town Building, or the Police Station to Pompo, and we're looking, here's the number of poles, here's what we're presi- presenting. And then, you know, have you give us a blessing, and then have people start working on gathering the data and whatnot. Um there's a ton of people interested, I've I have a list sort of going of people that wanna participate. Uh Gigi at the Council on Aging is sort of spearheading this for me right now. Uh she's been fantastic, she's working with Joe Jacobs, our Veterans Agent. Um but I keep saying, like, I don't wanna get too far down the road.
Right.
Not that I thought you were not gonna support it, but I feel like you should have a formal vote, so we can go to HLP and say, okay, the board has voted, you know, now we're ready to proceed, so.
Okay.
Um you know, we can certainly discuss whatever you want, but that's really my ask tonight, is just give us the blessing.
Sure.
Let us start running with it. And then, instead of having a true committee, um 'cause I feel like this board should really be the decision maker on the details. Um and I do think those things should be in public, so when we have criteria, we have that conversation, if it needs to be tweaked a little bit. Um but I I I don't want a full public committee, 'cause when we start talking about veterans and things, I don't think that information should be discussed in public.
Right.
Um and so that would just be the difference of why I wouldn't ask you to form a true committee.
Got it.
Because I feel like that stuff should not be, um you know, dates people lived here and what their service record are, those things I don't think we want.
No, that's not, yeah.
Public.
Yeah.
Um so that would be my ask for you, happy to discuss or talk about further if you have comments or suggestions.
Sure. Any questions?
Yay.
You're good?
I know, this is like finally, finally we're moving forward with this, this is great. Um are you okay with the motion as it stands?
Madam Chair, I've actually adjusted the motion from what the the Madam Administrator has presented.
Okay, do you wanna?
Read it?
Sure, I might, yes, I, you can read it, and then I can, then we can discuss.
If we need to adjust.
Absolutely.
So Madam Chair, I move that the town proceed with implement- implementation of the Hometown Heroes Program, and allow the town administrator to form a working group to evaluate and present recommendations at a future date.
Perfect.
Second.
All right, um any further discussion?
All right, seeing none, uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous, thank you very much.
Thanks, Denise.
All right, next.
My pleasure.
Fiscal year and transfers.
So we have a few um that just sort of arose yesterday, or actually apparently last week while I was on vacation. Um.
You have one, yeah?
The, yes, everyone should have one, and then you have an extra one to sign, just because. Um so basically, if you remember, we made some transfers your last meeting in April, I think, to try and cover everything. Um few lingering amounts, actually, in April, the police, Mike, offered up money to cover the snow and ice deficit. He offered too much in retrospect, so that's why we need to go back and put some money back in the police officer wages. And then the other items were obviously the thirty-six and dollar. And then um Superintendent Streets, um he was hired at a higher rate than we had budgeted, we just needed to clean that up.
Okay.
So um some small things, the Finance Committee, I was able to get a quorum for Thursday night. Um Mass General Law requires that year-end transfers have to be made by July fifteenth to close out the year. So um we had it on here as a placeholder, thank God. Uh and so the FinCom should meet on Thursday and make their second vote, and then we should be all set. But hopefully, this is all we need, we have one more bills payable warrant. Um but the town accountant has assured me that we have plenty of money to cover expenses for our last, the last run.
Amazing. Um cool, uh any questions? Nope, I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five year-end transfers as presented by the town administrator.
Second.
Uh any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. All right, moving along, meeting minutes. Any questions on the meeting minutes? Any discussion on the meeting minutes?
Yeah, one thing I noted, where it goes through the Town Hall Reuse Committee notes, after naming the individuals and and who was presenting something, then they're individually named just by last name, uh Mister, Miss, or anything, seems a little.
What?
So you want me to add first names, is that what you're?
Or or Mister Goldman explained that the committee was formed to create a comprehensive analysis rather than just leaving last name hanging out there.
Okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We have to pull it up soon.
I think there's also one for Bill Rube and.
It just uses their last name instead of an honorific for their first name.
Thank you, that was the word I was looking for, honorific. Or even if it is using their first name.
Yep.
Sorry, let me just scroll down fair enough to um. Well, so it discusses them in the the first paragraph, it lists all their first and last name.
But then just call them, if they'll come back at boot camp, they've, they're just being called by their last name.
So I can, you want me to add, how how would you like it, their first name, or do you want Mister, Miss?
We should just add their first name, because it's it's not, it's not uh consistent.
Okay.
So to be.
I think it's only that few.
I think it's, I think it's only a cou- a couple, but to make it consistent, it should just be their full names. Um all right, any further discussion? Oh, I thought you had your hand up, nope, uh.
Madam Chair, I don't think that's a substantive change, so I don't think we need to change our.
No, I don't think we have to change the motion.
So, Madam Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Aye, oh, sorry.
Yes?
Yes, what's your further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Okay, um, let's see, correspondence, um we have the list of, oh, this is, so, with our new correspondence, um.
Policy.
Policy that we are moving forward with. Um I will read a list of the additional correspondence for the seven, eight, twenty, twenty-five meeting that we received that did not make it on the list on our agenda. So seven, five, twenty-five, we received one from Jim Snyder Grant about permeating the bounds. Seven, seven, twenty, twenty-five, we received from Mark Roberts, please vote no on opining on national politics. Seven, five, twenty, twenty-five, from Mark Roberts, a gift subscription for you, Ari Stowe. Seven, five, twenty, twenty-five, Deborah Potter, defending our U.S. Constitution and separation of powers. Seven, six, twenty, twenty-five, from Mark Roberts, declarations of democracy. And seven, six, twenty, twenty-five, from Deborah Potter, Ari, declarations of democracy. Um before I, I just wanted to um talk very briefly about the um correspondence received from Allison Campbell, because I think it brings up an important point that we had talked about briefly, about warming and cooling center hours um in the uh in Pompo, and something that I think we didn't have a formal policy. Um I know this has been brought up over the years, um I think with global warming, um climate change, it's getting hotter, it's getting colder. Um we, if we have a space to provide warming or cooling centers in the town, I think it's something I would like to discuss um on a future agenda, I think, and that was something that had brought. Or is it a policy that we need?
Well, it's a policy, 'cause it costs money.
Right, 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 right.
We're different than the other communities, we don't have a full-time fire department. So that's why we we had the buildings open during regular business hours. And then the evening, when it came to the power outage, we sent people to the police station. I can't man a fire department twenty-four hours a day, we don't have that kind of staff.
Okay.
Um so it will have to be a policy decision, and you will have to commit funding to it if that's something you wanna proceed with.
Got it, got it, got it, got it.
Can I make one correction?
Yeah, absolutely.
And the names that were listed, the uh correspondence on seven, seven, twenty, twenty-five is actually from Mark Hartnett, not from Mark Roberts.
You were right on the vote no, you are correct.
Oh, okay.
Hartnett, not in Harknett.
Okay, sorry, my apologies.
No, it was printed that way, so, our apologies on that.
Okay, um all right.
So if you, how do you wanna handle that, do you wanna add it?
Well, considering that costs, considering it costs funds, um I do think it is a discussion that I would like to have about the parameters when the building is open. Like, I think, I don't know, I don't wanna talk about it right now, 'cause we can't talk about it right now. Um I, straw poll, is this something some, anyone else would like to talk about?
Yeah.
Moving forward?
Are you talking about expanding the hours, though?
No, we're talking about what it would, it would, it would cost money, we would have to come up with money to do, like, cooling and warming centers.
Well, and you'd have to figure out, like.
Staffing and.
We'd have to have overtime, the overtime opportunities, if people don't take it, like, are you ordering people in?
Right.
You know, this goes back to the MRC that was here that sort of fizzled out.
Right.
Um you know, we're looking, we've been looking for the last few years to convert the MRC into a a different acronym. Um you know, maybe that's a conversation you have with the Board of Health about getting volunteers back to provide those services.
Okay, okay.
What's the other policy?
Uh Mesal Reserve Corps.
Oh.
And that's, that was there, they have equipment for shelters and whatnot. Um more so for uh emergency situations, but you know, you could consider extreme temperatures in emergency situation.
Right.
Um because co- coming up with a policy, you know, and funding, it's, you know, it's not gonna be easy when it comes to ordering employees to work a shelter.
I know, I know.
So I think we need to rely on, if there's that much of a push from the community, I think we need to rely on community members to step up and say, I will go and I will work the volunteer system.
So I think.
That's what we need to do.
And I think that would be more, I think that would be a discussion that that would make sense.
Yeah, so I think for your agenda item, you can invite the Board of Health.
Okay.
Um they oversaw the MRC, and they, this new, and I can't remember the acronym, but there, this new group would fall into them, as obviously the health um officials. So maybe have that conversation about what's possible.
Okay, I think, I think that's probably, I mean, not probably, that's exactly where I would prefer to land. Um at this point, I'm not trying to make anyone spend any more money. Um but also, it's, you're right, that that opens a whole other can of worms that is not just, hey, we're gonna open up warming and cooling centers because we have full to.
Right, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna diminish it that it's just funding, 'cause it's not, it's staffing.
It's, it is.
And we are, we are actually losing staffing in all departments, we are low across the board.
Right.
You know, we're ordering people in to cover shifts. If we have to order people in to cover a shelter, I just don't know how that will.
Right.
Go over with union employees and just, so. I I think if there's a way that we can rely on volunteers and have people that we can call that are on a list that we say, hey, here's, you know, I have no problem having the community center open. We just need people there to oversee it and make sure that people can get to the facilities if need be, or showers if we're talking a long period of time and whatnot.
Okay, that sounds great.
Theoretically, would this just be, you know, there's a cold emergency declared, therefore it's gonna be open? Or if it's like.
That's a, that's a conversation for you all to have.
That's the conversation we'd have to have, 'cause we'd have to set parameters around it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
This can be, that, that's, yeah, and.
Like I said, for now.
This can be every day or every week, like, that'd be the same.
No, no, I mean, for now, we do it, you know, when it's extreme heat, we say, come in, charge. When it's cold, bring your devices, charge your equipment, we're here.
Right.
Um you know, when we had the power outage and the extreme heat, we said, go to the police station overnight. I mean, there's someplace you can go and and stay cool.
Right.
Um but you would have to set those parameters as a board, you know, when, when is it that I can just say, hey, come on in, we're here? Versus, we're gonna establish a shelter and bring in volunteers.
Right.
Or a cooling center, not necessarily shelter, but a cooling or warming center.
Well, yeah, and it would just be nice, honestly, to have that kind of a policy on the books, just because I, we don't have like an emergency. shelter situation on the books for anything, right, so it would be nice to just kind of have that there, um, to understand what that would entail, so.
With the Allison's letter, there's nothing we're gonna be able to do before the end of the summer.
That's fine, we can, I mean, I just, I want it on a future agenda, so that it's something that we actually can have a good discussion about, move forward, get some-
Yeah.
I mean, I just wanna share, and nothing against the letter, and I know people have said this, I live in a town of forty thousand people, there's never been a cooling or a warming center in Bilirica.
Yes. Yeah.
Never in my lifetime there, so, and we have full-time staff, we have police, we have fight, we have a giant gymnasium.
Yeah.
I mean, every school is under the town's domain, there's never been a center to warm or cool people. So, I I think it's certainly a great benefit to have if we have the ability to offer it. But it's not something that happens everywhere, because I, it just doesn't.
Yeah. And I think for me, and this is the, I'll end on this, I think for me, the reason I even wanted to bring it up was not necessarily because of the ask in that letter, but more that it brought to my mind that I wanted to have something on the books for, should there be an emergency situation come up,
Yeah, we do.
that we have a a policy, I mean, I think that with all of the extreme weather that's been going on and and um whatnot, it has kind of brought to front of mind that, um, I would like to just have that kind of a policy.
And the Board of Health may say, you know, we have something in our books that we haven't needed, but we can implement, they may have something.
They may say, they have something, right. Right, right.
And given, like, extreme weather, or you know, what happened with the Fire Academy, or you know, extreme cold, how, when something like that happens, how many people are you know, reaching out, expressing a need for a warming or cooling?
That's what she was just saying, that nobody has, so.
No one has reached out. No one has ever reached out to me, or any, I know the other town departments that says, hey, we need to-
You said, I thought you said people have been like, oh, I need a place to charge, right?
No, no.
Yeah.
Oh.
We've had, we've had people say, there should be a place to charge, there should be a place to cool off, there should be a place in town to heat.
Yeah.
Right.
No one has said to me, no one has said to me, we need, we need power, we need cooling, we need
I, I-
You said to our I need it in this moment, right.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we're sure.
Right.
Um, and I know across the board, I mean, even the Council on Aging has reached out to people and said, we're here.
Right.
We're not getting, we, I don't see that there's people that say, hey, I need it, now, when there's an emergency, I'm sure people will. Um, you know, I think people may do in the extreme temperatures, but doesn't mean it's not gonna happen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, power outage happened, did people show up at the police station?
I don't think so, I'll double check with him, but I don't think so.
That's, that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, trying to get at, okay.
Yeah. Um, alright.
Good thought, though.
Any other discussion? I will take a final motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting
Second.
July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
At least I didn't jump in with I, second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and that's unanimous, thank you all, we have lots to sign on the side table, so please.